The committee recommends that all options presented by Superintendent Ogeron regarding the replacement of Grand Cuyahoga Elementary School due to Hurricane Ida be considered and voted upon at the board meeting on December 6, 2022. And I'll read the options. Option 1, Grand Cuyahoga Elementary remains at Elysian Field site. Option 2, Grand Cuyahoga Middle merges with Oaklawn to make Ellander Middle. Also, under option 2, Grand Cuyahoga Elementary will occupy Grand Cuyahoga Middle Building. Option 3A, rebuild Grand Cuyahoga Elementary on its original site. Option 3B, rebuild Grand Cuyahoga Elementary on the Grand Cuyahoga Middle Site. I have a motion for...
I'd like to offer a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to offer a motion that we use option 3, rebuild Grand Cuyahoga Elementary School on original site.
Okay, do we have to approve this motion first? No? Okay. So, on the floor is to...
Yes.
Right. Is to... You want to say anything first?
I think before we make that motion, you've got to get FEMA approval. So, I think we match what we did with Upper Little Cuyahoga.
Yes.
Same thing we did there. So, it should be the motion.
If I may...
Same thing, but it's not rebuilt right now.
I'm for all of them to be considered on the same page.
I have that language, sir. Would you like to see it?
I would like, yes, please. As long as we're accomplishing the same thing.
Yes, it does, sir.
Is the same with what you said? Is the same thing for Upper Little Cuyahoga?
So, the motion on the floor is...
Yes. Okay. I would agree with this.
You need to read it.
Well, read it out loud.
Can I read it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Recreation to board approve option 3A and authorize superintendent's staff to proceed with request to FEMA for the demolition and replacement of Grand Cuyahoga Elementary School on the current site.
So, that's the motion.
I see.
Mr. Ford is seconding it. Any public comments? If you do have a public comment, come up here, state your name and address. And you have 3 minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wazan. Craig Luke, 103 Georgia Grove Drive in the Grand Cuyahoga-Dulack Community. A little bit of a monkey wrench. I wasn't quite sure what just happened, but my assumption and my understanding is that you basically put a contingency in the motion with FEMA approval. Was that correct?
Yes, sir.
What just happened? Okay. Let me just say one thing. Would I be redundant? You all know the issue. I don't have to get up here and plead any case and everything. You all know the issue at this point. I feel good. And the reason I feel good is based on the committee meeting that I attended 3 weeks or so ago, maybe a month ago. There were 5 of you that made comments. And based on the comments that you all made, there has been no public new information that has arisen that I'm aware of that would change any of your minds, the 5 people that basically supported option 3A. The only thing publicly that did come out was Mr. Ogeron had an interview on HTV. And I want to commend Mr. Ogeron. I thought he was very fair in that presentation. He showed no bias toward any of the options. He presented it, even made a positive comment about option 3A, said it was a good option. The only thing that I would want to caution you about is that a comment that he did make was that if you guys would decide, and ladies, I apologize for that, would decide to go with option 3A, that you may not have funds available to do the projects that you guys had, and ladies, forgive me again, wanted to do concerning the issue that y'all had a few years ago, that the Chamber of Commerce wanted you to basically upgrade all your facilities and everything, that there wouldn't be any money available maybe for that. I want to just caution you all or ask you all to not allow that comment to influence you in any way. And I'll tell you my rationale behind that. When you all supported that plan to upgrade and repair all your facilities, at that moment, you had, at that time, you had no funding source, to the best of my knowledge.
That's correct.
Y'all were going to have to kind of go through it and kind of limp your way more or less as funding become available. Potential funding is now available because of a hurricane. But what I'm telling you guys is, if that hurricane never happened, you would be in the exact same position on those projects that you were in at the time you implemented it, because you wouldn't have no funding source. So, my point is, you are no worse off than you would have been from day 1 to do those projects. So, I'm just asking you to not allow that to influence the decision that you guys are about to make. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Okay, so who motioned it? Mr. ... Come on in. Please state your name and address, please.
Maya Robinson, 4887 Grand Cuyahoga Road, Houma, Louisiana. My mother's a retired school teacher. She taught with the Terragon Parish School District for over 20-plus years. She's deceased now. And I'm a resident of Grand Cuyahoga. I've lived down there, moved away to go to college, but came back down that way. And I remember, as a child, just riding by Grand Cuyahoga Elementary and feeling a sense of pride knowing that I had a school within my community. I remember just feeling that sense of accomplishment every time we've recovered after the storm. We've survived that hurricane when we were down in Dulack, and then we moved back. We moved to our current location now. I just remember that feeling as a child, just that feeling of knowing that we can bounce back from anything on that bayou, knowing that we on that bayou, that we have that resilience to bounce back. And I feel like our school on that bayou represents a sense of hope for our children. Like, right now, everything around the bayou now, most of the structures have not been rebuilt. And I feel like our kids need to see something that is whole, something that's excellent, something that can show them that they can bounce back from anything that they go through in life. I don't think that we should leave our school in abandonment. I feel like our story should continue, a story of us being able to rebuild. And when our kids, and my child, asked me again, and she asked about Grand Cuyahoga, I want to be able to tell her that we were able to rebuild after a hurricane and not that we had to abandon our school and that we weren't able to rebuild this school in our community. I feel like every school, every child, should have a school within their community. And we need to have that faith, you know, and we need to be able to just instill in them that faith to weather any storm and any trial that they can face within their community. We owe this to our children. We owe this to the people of Grand Cuyahoga. We are bayou proud. Let resilience be our response. And what else did I want to say? Just like any other school in the parish, we rebuild that school. I feel like a hurricane can hit any school in the parish. We didn't have flooding, but a hurricane came and destroyed our school. So, just like any other residents on any other bayou would want to have their school rebuilt, we want ours rebuilt too.
Any other public comments?
I'm so tired of coming up here. Candace Chauvin, 5146, R. Forj. I am the PRC representative for Grand Cuyahoga Middle School. I'm also the branch manager of the Dulack Branch Library. So, every day I work in a newer, you know, newer constructed building in 2009, and I was struck by something you said, Mr. Ogeron, in your HTV interview about the sustainability of newly constructed buildings. So, my building did open up the day after we received electricity, which was great. We had very minimal damage to our library, and we were able to service our community, which was in desperate need. And we were able to hit the ground running when the FEMA temp came up and all these different things that were happening on the bayou. It was really great. I'm a public servant, so I understand the needs of my community, and I do my best every single day to help them, and I'm pretty familiar with our community sentiment. And I truly believe that option 3A is the way to go. Our community is very resilient, but we desperately need your help. We are asking just for the same thing that Upper Little Cuyahoga is getting, nothing extra. And I want to commend the school board for its forward thinking, especially when it comes to mergers. And I know we need South Terragon Middle, and I know one day in the future we will need maybe an Ellander Middle. And these things do need to happen, but both things can be true. Grand Cuyahoga Elementary definitely needs to, you know, they need to be rebuilt for the sake of our community, for the future. You know, you're looking at some of your students in this room tonight, and their future, frankly, depends on the way you vote tonight. So, I really want to thank you all, but before I let you go, I want to read something from Ms. Sharlene Stevenson. She wrote this back in 2009, following Gustav and Ike, and she says, regarding her work in Dulack, I believe she was at the Dulack Community Center at the time. And she closed out her statement on her website. She says, "What the people of Dulack need is a thriving economy, a commitment to education, so the next generation can create its own solutions and expectations, and decent storm-proof housing. They need to feel that the world knows about them, and most of all, they need hope." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Janie Wazan, 5793 Grand Cuyahoga Road. I have mine written down because I'm going to forget everything I want to say. I'm just going to be short and quick. Tonight, you guys are making a big decision that affects all our community and our kids. A community that none of you live in. We are the people that live in that community, and we are the ones that are going to be affected by your decision. I'm a 29-year-old school teacher, and I believe that our kids need to stay in our community where they live. If a school's being built in a community in Little Cuyahoga, and their community is worth it, our community is worth it as well. Our kids deserve a school in their community. We should do everything in our power to preserve our culture for our children. It makes us who we are. Our school, our community, makes us who we are. We are different. We are different than everybody else, and we need our school. Our community needs our school to stay in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments?
David Luke, Dulack, Louisiana, 4415.
Please go to the mic, sir.
David Luke, Dulack, Louisiana, 4415, Grand Cuyahoga Road. I just want to say, we're glad to keep our community together, which is a good thing by building the school. And I'm with South Louisiana Electric Co-op, the president, and I want to let everybody know, we would be so proud to serve the electricity, to build that school, and also to give them residential rates, the cheapest rates you can get. And I want to thank all of y'all for all the help. Appreciate y'all and all the people that came and supported. Thank you.
My name is Father Antonio. I'm the Catholic priest down at the Holy Family Church, 6641 Grand Cuyahoga. You know, I'm Australian. I'm a foreigner. Maybe I shouldn't be speaking here, you know? I'm on a green card, so I'm not even an official citizen, you could say. But you do have something written on the wall there that says, "In God, we trust." I made a vow of poverty, so I've lived like the Franciscan spirituality. So, for 20 years, I haven't been able to accept money in my hands, so I always ask for help. I hitchhike everywhere where I go. You might have even seen us on the road. When this hurricane hit, I was approached by the Mennonite Disaster Service. They offered their help, free labor to build houses, and they said, "We need 3 things. We need, uh, 4 things. We need meaningful work." And I said, "Behold, just look around, almost every house destroyed." "We need a place to keep them." 40 people at a time that would come in from Pennsylvania to help rebuild, free labor. Case management, we didn't have that. We figured it out. We've got Ms. Kathy there, has been helping us with that as well. And we needed $1 million. Now, I said, I thought my heart, well, I could go and beg for a sandwich. I don't personally have $1 million in my pocket, but we ended up with the grace of God and in the trust, as Jesus says, and I don't know what your faith is, but I do believe in Southern Louisiana. Most of us here do have Christ in our hearts. Seek ye first the kingdom of God, and all the rest will be given unto you. That we've done that, and this is what it takes, is people who care about the poor, the church's priority for the poor and the needy. Down the bayou, take away the schools, and it becomes only even worse. Your help is appreciated. And since that time, we found $2 million, and we're building over 18 houses now for our people. Thank you.
My name is Abraham Parfey, 4198 Grand Cuyahoga Road. I'm a recipient to one of the houses. I moved down the bay. I'm 51 years old with a 3-year-old. Moved right down from the school because my oldest son is 11 years old, gifted in talent, went through Grand Cuyahoga Elementary. I'm a PTA dad. I was lucky enough at 47 to sit down at the table and have lunch with my son. I watched PTA presidents become, go to school, take the time with their babies, watch their babies grow, grow themselves to become teachers. We have one of the best math teachers at Grand Cuyahoga Middle School right now, is a math teacher. She's how old the sister do it? She done it. We have 2 nurses that were PTA moms while I was there. One is a teacher's aide. One's a secretary at the middle school. The school is a community. The community grows together with the children, the grandparents. As myself, I was 57 years old with a baby and an aging mother down the bay. No way I could have ever spent time when my wife needed me to go sit with her, do anything we could for the teachers to help the teachers do their job. Respect the children. Our children are doing better now. Well, the teachers ain't teaching 25 kids, they teaching 20 kids. The kids are learning more, the teacher has more to them. Last thing we need is parents to lose interest and respect for the public education system. I have a niece that was, got a daughter, 4th grade, and they told her she didn't know how to read. Our prior principal was just sending kids through. Callahan stepped in and stopped that. Callahan stepped in and turned our school around. Our kids are doing better. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for y'all doing 3A is what we need. We didn't pick out where our community ends. Our federal government, state government, and parish government did with the Morgana. Steve Lee's got us $12 billion last year to protect our community. Bubble Dove has the locks open right now to go fishing. Soon as, we didn't have a drop of water. I was up in Ponchatoula talking to preachers this Sunday. They donate money to India to fix schools. I had people stop at the house from Australia that donate more money to build more homes. Let's build a community. Let's build our America. In God, we trust. We pay our taxes. Let's see a little turnaround. Let's build a school, get all our money back, build us our gymnasiums. You know, it's money in the bank. It's our future for our kids. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
My name's Taylor Sole, 7331 Shumpert Row. I have 5 kids. We completely lost our home with the storm. 3 of them's at Grand Cuyahoga Elementary right now, so they age from 2 to 9. After the storm, we moved to Carlsbad. My kids got to go to a brand-new school that was freshly built, but even though we were there and they were off the bayou, you can never take the bayou out of my kids. So, they still questioned, "When are we going to go back home?" So, we stayed there for 6 months. We didn't know what we were going to do when we got home. You know, we're still displaced, but they're back with their friends, with our family. We're back here. And the only thing that I can continue to think of is from Ms. Stacy Sole. She would say it every single day, "The golden rule: Do unto others as you want done to yourself." If your kids was there, if you lived down our bayou, you would want it rebuilt. You wouldn't want to be somewhere you're not used to. Our kids just want to go home. That's where we all need to be, back home, back on our bayou. Thank you.
My name is Pierre Sole, I'm 6831 Dulack. Born and raised on the bayou, went to all the schools down the bay, not all of them, but the school that was on the corner of Dulack and Four Point Road. And then, as I grew up, we moved over, and I wound up going to LaCarp, and then I wound up going to South Terragon. All the stuff that the people heard tonight, I was coming with a different view. The people changed my mind. 3A changed my mind. If y'all go ahead with 3A, that'd be fine. That'd be fantastic. We have a lot of talent that comes from that bay. You know, I have a son that's in banking. I have a son that's a doctor. All come from Dulack. So, I would like to see y'all go ahead and build that school. There's still a lot more talent to come. Thank you.
Barbara Lartinter, 301 Hush Road, Shreve. I'm from the farthest north I can get. First of all, I'm a mom. I love schools. We've got some of the best schools here in Terragon Parish, and I think we could put our school board up against any school board in the state, and we'd still be number 1. I do not want to see these kids, the little kids, be put in with the middle kids. These little children in the elementary school are not mature enough. They don't understand that they have to wait for something. The bigger kids are going to want to pick on the little ones, and we're going to have a cat fight. So, let's just go forward and build the school for the children at the site where they belong. And I thank y'all.
Any other public comments? Okay, so, Mr. DeHart, you made the motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a few comments, because I know a lot of you were here at the committee meeting. You're going to hear the same story from me. I'm not going to try and just be redundant, but I can tell you right now, I have family down in Grand Cuyahoga. That community, the years I've been serving that community, they're our family. But I do have blood relatives down there, all over the bayou, and that's not why I'm choosing this. It's about keeping communities alive, and I've learned that over the years. And I can tell you right now, Grand Cuyahoga Elementary is the old school that's no longer being used for a school. Flooded 4 times, we helped shovel mud out of that. The community became together. We sacrificed. We didn't know where the money was going to come from, but we found ways. And all I can say to you, that I've dealt with FEMA many, many hurricanes as a school board representative. And to me, there are means to accomplish something if you don't never give up. What I'd like to say is that 3A will keep that community alive, and that's my duty and responsibility as a school board representative. But not just for Grand Cuyahoga site, all of the elementary sites and schools that are damaged, we have to fix them, and we will find the means. And I'm not here to say, as a politician, I'm not a politician, I'm a public servant. Mr. Luke spoke earlier. We've been to Washington, DC. If it takes me going to Baton Rouge and try and help find funding, whatever the method needs to be, whenever we find out what FEMA is going to tell us, I know in the past, they have always helped us out. They didn't make us relocate, and I know things are different. But what I learned just recently, I want to share very briefly. I know we have some levies in some places, and it's steadily improving, but they have not redone any of the maps yet for elevations, and I know that's what FEMA looks at. So, I'm not here to say they're going to be looking at us harder than anybody else. All I'm saying is that, to me, things have improved in that community. We need to keep it viable. And these small children, they, I'm serious, parents, all parents, never cut that strength from that little child for all of their life, but really, the first 3 or 4 years in school, they're very passionate, and they feel safe in the community to know if I need something or I'm not feeling well, I can get to that school quick. They know Mom and Dad's right around the corner. That's a comfort to me, to have children want to go to school, happy to learn, and have so many friends. And yes, the community is why I'm fighting for that school to keep viable to where we, no matter how many schools we have to fix, no matter what the, we're going to find a way to fund it. I don't know the answer today, because we all bonded out right now on the monies that we had done until we pay off some of their debt. We cannot go ahead and sell more bonds. But I'm telling you right now, if other states and parishes can go ahead and find help from the legislators in Baton Rouge and Washington, DC, I've been to Washington, DC 18 times, and I'm telling you right now, we have legislators that's just a phone call away. And I will do personally anything I can for not only this site, but the other schools in this parish, because we have an obligation, all 9 of us, to fix what's broken in Terragon Parish. And this hurricane has brought more people together, not just this one, the ones in the past. We had people that really, truly in the community, might not have been best friends, they weren't enemies, but it brought people closer together. And that's something that I'll never experience anywhere else, except for right here in Terragon Parish. Now, other people can say the same thing, but I've seen it. And I will give you my word, anything comes up and options we have, I'm not going to give up until we are successful to try and recover these schools. So, thank y'all for listening, and thank y'all for y'all support, and thank y'all for coming here and voicing your concerns. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Mr. Ford?
I agree with Rodgedale. Thank you for coming. I love seeing so many faces in the audience, smiling, frowning. I just love seeing all you guys. You make me feel better about myself. I do want to start off by saying, you know, let me remind you of something. The superintendent and his staff, they report to us, right? They answer to us. So, there's no, there should be no animosity towards him and his staff, because in business, which they have to look at this as a business, there's the Q versus Q, right? There's quality versus quantity. It's, you deal with it every day, right? So, these guys have to look in a quantitative measure and see, where does this stack up against the entire district? How does this fit into the grand scheme? How do we budget for this type of construction, this type of renovation, remodel, whatever the case may be? As a board, we have a unique ability to look at things, not necessarily in a quantitative measure, but in a qualitative, right? The quality of our school, the quality of the community that it may or may not bring. My initials, my initial concerns were from a logistical standpoint with regards to elevation, the additional cost with elevation, what would it mean for the surrounding properties and the community as a whole? Those concerns are gone now. I no longer have those concerns. The next thing I need to consider is, how much longer do I have here? How much longer does anybody else here have? And at most, we have 12 years left on this board, and that's not even the one sitting here on this panel. There's 1 person in the audience that may be here 12 years from now. So, what type of impact are we going to make today that's going to improve tomorrow? Well, if we make the wrong decision today, you know, we're not going to have to deal with it in 4 years, in 8 years. We won't have to look at it. We won't have to answer to it. Those that are going to be to come will, right? So, this is something we need to consider. We need to look at, what is the best for the future of this, not just our district, but this community, Grand Cuyahoga community? Now, if we were looking at this issue on its own, without the consideration of any of the other buildings that have already been decided on, if Grand Cuyahoga Elementary was the only school in the district that got, you know, beat up or destroyed during the hurricane, it would be a lot easier for us to decide. But then again, it could be a lot harder, because we have to look at the... But then again, it could be a lot harder because we have to look at the feasibility of such a school. What I'm hoping for is that we, as a board, can go ahead and choose 3A together to help rebuild this community as an investment in the future. Now, honestly, if I were looking at this and I were the superintendent, I would say, how is this school going to benefit us 25, 50 years from now? Okay? So I don't envy him at this point. He's got to make some very tough decisions. As a board, we can kind of make decisions that won't really last as long as we're on here. They will impact, but they won't, we won't, we won't see it year in, year out. So I think where we stand right now, if we're making an investment in this community, and one of the things I've been saying for years is, is education should be about empowerment, not entitlement. And I keep hearing people talk about what they're entitled to. But what are we doing to empower? What are we doing to empower this community, these young folks that are coming up, these kindergartners, pre-k? What are we doing to empower them? If we don't build on this, in this community, we're taking anything they may have, any potential empowerment they may have, taking it away. We're taking away their option to self-governance, and I've talked about that in the past, too. So I think, I was hoping that we could do a unanimous second on this one, but I'm pleased to second this motion because I think 3A is the only way, measuring and weighing all considerations, the only way we should go as a board, and it's the only thing that we should be choosing and considering tonight. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Ms. Sole?
I was an educator in this system for 35 years, and all that credit goes to Grand Cayou, because that's where I did my first three years. This little redneck drove down from North Louisiana and ended up in Dulack teaching. And that is where I got my foundation. That is when I learned what community support was all about. We started the CCC, the Community Care Club. I had parents that would do anything and everything for me. I remember one time a kid brought me a sack of oysters. I didn't know any better. I said, "I'll put that in the back of my car." And then they told me, "No, you can't do that." I didn't know at the time. But I support 3A, Grand Cayou Elementary. That community deserves their school. And I was also an elementary school principal for 11 years at Lisa Park. I know what those four-year-olds, five-year-olds, and six-year-olds, they need to be there, not away from their community. So I definitely support 3A.
Mr. Lagarde?
I think everybody in the room know how I feel, because I was the first one to come out for 3A, or before it was a 3A, to support Grand Cayou. And I even signed the petition, so I'm not going to make it long. You know, just let's do what we have to do. You know, I'm for rebuilding Grand Cayou.
I would just like to ask for roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Wait. Oh, can I make a comment? Am I the last one?
Well, yeah.
Anybody else can make a comment? Yeah, I, I just want to address the members of the Grand Cayou community, and thank you for spending countless hours here over several meetings, coming to these meetings and presenting really good arguments to keep Grand Cayou Middle open, or Grand Cayou Elementary open. You showed how free speech and a democracy really works, and while you may not have changed the mind of every board member up here, I predict that you've changed enough minds to get more than votes than you need to keep the school open. You, you, you guys presented yourself with, with grace and style, and I have great respect for you. And I even made a new friend back there, Mr. Parfe, and I'm hoping he'll take me fishing one day. But it's not going to affect my vote. So you guys did a good job, and I want to tell you that before the vote was taken. Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, so roll call vote? So how's the vote? Yes would be for 3A.
All votes are in. One objection, Mr. Clyde Hamner. The vote is eight to one. Motion carries.